Good evening and welcome to this council committee of the whole meeting. My name is William Lutz, president of council. This evening we are here to discuss an amendment to the application of the Troy City Council's downtown designated outdoor refreshment area. And I believe Salome will be doing the presentation this evening. So Salome, what is yours?
Good evening. Thank you. I am here to discuss the amendments proposed in the application. I will start with a brief history. City council passed ordinance 11 on March 15, 2021. Refereendum was held on November 2nd, 2021. And the voters supported establishing DORA in city of Troy. DORA became effective on November 26 at 2021 and Grand Illumination event. And at the right corner you can see the photo of the event. Current rules. So DORA is in effect from Thursday to Saturday, from noon to 10:00 p.m. DORA beverages must be served in 16-ounce specially marked cups supplied by Troy Main Street. Permanent DORA area is 20.24 acres. And the next slide shows proposed amendments, which includes amending DORA days and hours. Proposed days and hours are Sunday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. DORA beverages can be served in 20-ounce non-glass containers supplied by liquor establishments with city sanctioned sticker. And at the bottom of the slide, we can see how the sticker would look like. Proposed permanent addition to the DORA area is 11.54 acres. And total permanent boundary would be 31.8 acres. The application also proposes adding 161.64 acres as temporary boundary. Which means that those areas could be activated upon request of the event organizers and approved by city council. Also important change in the application is that the city council couldn't amend conditions with the ordinance process. Next three slides will show DORA boundaries. This map shows current DORA boundaries marked in orange, which is 20.24 acres. Next slide shows current boundary with proposed permanent addition marked in yellow. As I already mentioned, permanent addition will be 11.56 acres. And...
We'll be there anyway. So I think the new areas are here. They're here.
And at West Main Street.
Out West Main Street.
And by the courthouse.
And by the courthouse.
So if approved, permanent DORA area would be 31.8 acres. And sorry, this is even difficult to see on this map. But this map shows current DORA boundary with past permanent proposed DORA area and temporary areas if approved. And those are marked in blue. And just to make it easier, those are areas are Treasure Island, Community Park, Hobart Arena. And also part of the eastern side of the downtown Troy to the grain elevator. So you could see, I don't, I think that's in Mulberry Street.
Yeah, that's Mulberry.
Yes, yes. So from Mulberry Street to the grain elevator.
Apparently the PowerPoint projector, I don't know why, we'll have to look into this, is not showing on the camera. So just for the record, this will be on our website tomorrow morning. So anybody who wants to follow up with it, they can, they will be able to see it on the website.
Those are just reminders for additional DORA rules. Liquor establishment must not allow DORA containers from other bars or restaurants into their establishment. They also should be enforcing responsibilities they have as liquor permanent holders, which is checking IDs and not over serving their customers. Also, customers who purchase DORA beverages should remember that they cannot do DORA boundaries with a DORA beverage, holding DORA beverage. Also, they cannot bring their own containers and refill alcohol beverages. And also, it is important to remember that the DORA beverages can be only consumed in DORA containers, which will be marked with the stickers adopted by the city. And this slide discussed sanitation and signage plan. If proposed permanent boundaries are adopted, six additional trash receptacles will be placed. And also, of course, the signage to mark the boundaries. Temporary boundary extensions. If those areas are activated, the event organizer will be responsible to place trash receptacles and also DORA signage. And student park departments staff will continue monitoring DORA area and empty food trash receptacles as needed, in addition to the regular pickup schedule. And also on the right, you can see the how the DORA signage will look like. Those will be similar to the ones we already have at the boundary, but of course, the hours based will be changed on it if the application is approved. And also, we will have a QR code, which will take people to the website where they can see DORA rules in details and read and also see the map. We have received support letters from Troy Main Street and Troy Area Chamber of Commerce. This slide shows letter submitted by Troy Main Street. It was included in your packet as well. Troy Main Street is supporting DORA amendments. And we have also included two photos from the first five events. Just some customers enjoying DORA beverages in downtown Troy. And next slide shows letter received from Troy Area Chamber of Commerce and the photo from Strawberry Festival. They also support the DORA amendments. And they've mentioned that it would be beneficial for Strawberry Festival as well if they decide they want to serve DORA beverages at the event. Or expand the boundary at the lobby. And this slide shows few comments received from downtown businesses. I will not read them, but all of them are in support of DORA. Those comments were submitted in the monthly surveys. Troy downtown businesses have been submitting to Troy Main Street and the city. As of January 6th, we have received a few proposed amendments. One is about West Franklin Street, eliminating sidewalk on south of West Franklin Street. Which is along the parking lot by City Hall and only including the sidewalk north of the City Hall. So that would be from West Franklin Street to Cherry Street. But only the north side of the sidewalk. Also Miami County Commissioners asked to not include their parking lot as a permanent DORA area, but to mark it as in blue as a temporary addition to the DORA area. And also, if the liquor establishment, based on the application, have to be renewed to include the other establishments that may be in the area. No others?
Hopefully everybody saw the email today. Connor Heron, owner of Heron's. So that's the additional feedback that we got. That's the only feedback that was positive.
One other question on the...
Let's...
Go away, go away.
Let's have Salome finish the presentation, then we'll get the questions.
So moving forward, city council has approved or disapprove the application by February 26, 2023. If this is decided to application, application be adopted as is, then we can move forward with the process. But if the council desires to have additional amendments or changes in the application, the ordinance should be indefinitely postponed at January 17th meeting. And then city director would submit new application to the city council with changes as part of the new ordinance. And then the city council would consider that a new application on February 6th. That application would be submitted on February 6th meeting for the council to consider.
So I just want to make sure everybody knows that process, because it's a little different than how we do regular committee versus council ordinance or resolution. The state requires that we submit an application. I submit an application, an application to the clerk of council. And so that's what the council has to act on. So we can't amend it now and then just put a new application to the meeting. There has to be that additional step where at next meeting, if you want to change the boundaries or, you know, recognize the feedback that we mentioned in the previous slide, it would be an indefinite postponement. And then per the law director, I could submit a new application for immediate consideration at the next council meeting.
Okay. Salome, are you finished?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the presentation? You know, Mr. Schilling?
I just want to follow up with Patrick's comments.
Okay, Mr. Seaver?
Basically, well, if we want to be good neighbors and accommodate the Methodist Church request and the county commissioners' request, our position for today will be to turn this one down and then ask that it be redrawn to accommodate those two areas. And then... And/or other things. But if we wanted to change those, that's what we would need to do.
Right, and so you would indefinitely postpone at the next meeting. We would update the map to accommodate those changes. And if there's anything else that wants to be changed, then we would reflect that in the application and then move forward at the next council meeting.
And what would happen if we chose to just say we like it as is? We would just have the county commissioners up so with us and our neighbors to... What would happen if we didn't move to change it? If we just kept to this? But I mean, ideally, it would be staff's position that we, that these are reasonable requests.
It is, and we, you know, it's a matter of, I guess, three weeks, because there's a fifth Monday in January. But it's a relatively short time, and it is January, February. So participation in DORA is probably going to be lower than it would be during the summer. So there's not that kind of urgency.
Mr. Schilling?
Okay, when I talk with the attorney about this, what the church asked for was not to have DORA in front of first place on West Franklin Street. So if you want to extend the border to the corner of the city building, they're okay with that. You put the trash can in front of the door by the city building here on West Franklin.
There would probably be no benefit to doing that, since we have red plaques on, we don't really want DORA drinks in the building. And so there'd really not be any reason for us to allow them down sidewalk in front of City Hall. It would be cleaner to be able to move the trash can at the corner rather than in the mid-block.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
One there now.
Carl, 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 have your questions? Mrs. Sneak?
If I could, I mean, I understand the request. Is it basically to do with the moving of the signage about DORA from the south corner to the north corner of that intersection? So that doesn't change the boundaries, though?
It does, because the DORA would not be the entire street right of way. It would be just the north sidewalk where they would be able to walk. See, the DORA is technically a right-of-way ordinance. And the properties that are within the DORA are surrounded by that right-of-way. Always have the option to either have a green welcome DORA drinks or red no DORA drinks sign prohibiting or allowing on their property. So all this would do is push the boundary to the north. So, you know, somebody couldn't, they're not supposed to anyway, but couldn't walk down the middle of Franklin Street with a DORA drink.
They'd have to walk in front of parking lot and in the gym.
Well, they'd have to be walking on the north sidewalk if we made the change here.
And again, the reason they talked about that is that we have several meetings a week there. We have a recovery service. And in talking to our minister and the other people involved in recovery programs, they feel it would be beneficial for those that are in the recovery program not to have that exposure.
It might be a greater debate if, you know, what? If that was like the only relatively minor change. But we do also have color change requests from the county commission. Go from yellow at their parking lot to blue, so that the parking lot's only activated with their permission and your specific approval, with notwithstanding legislation.
Mr. Phillips?
My question is, on the West Main Street, on the address range, we have 220 and a half crossed out. So we're adjusting that from number 2 West Main all the way down to 522 West Main?
Yes, to Adam Street, to include those additional businesses who will be in the permanent extension. It does, yes.
Second of all, even if we excluded the county or boundary around the county property there, is that, would that include the parking lots behind Basil's and Sub House that they own and sell?
Those are already in.
Those are already in. And there's no objection from...
Right, I mean, that was part of the original map.
Okay. They're also, they still will require some signage around the county quad, if you will, that it would not be for, you know, the square.
The complex?
Around the county building.
The complex?
The complex.
Sure.
That's going to exclude the...
And there's already existing signage?
Right, so...
So that would stay.
On the boundary along the riverbed. Yeah, I know we've had some discussions about taking, you know, having the dam taken out, not us to see doing it, but somebody doing it. And then building, of course, a brand-new dam by Treasure Island. And then that would drop the riverbed low enough to put in a walkway. We haven't gotten any funding or approval on that, right?
I'm not sure where you're going with this, but it's, but...
Well, I mean, the question is, is that this is not our last, this is not our last go-around with DORA. I mean, we're going to still continue to look at this and look at amendments into the future, and that has to be corrected.
We may. It depends on what kind of development, particularly on the east side, is spurred later on. And we have that, we have that opportunity any year that we want to.
It looked like a little reach that we're giving the fish an opportunity to participate in DORA. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, we could always come back and include if, in fact, all that funding and work has been done, then we can go and include that walkway, riverwalk, or whatever you want to call it, into future DORA.
I don't know what, I, I'm not aware of any plans to have some kind of a walkway across the river.
No, on the side of the river, by the...
You mean the recreational trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a conversation really for later, because I'm not sure how we...
But we have it in there right now.
As an activation only. So that would only be...
Well, my question, my question is, we don't even have it yet, so why are we activating?
It's the current level.
Pardon?
It's the current level.
Right, that's just the levy that we've got. And so here's the...
So if I'm lucky, I can take a drink on that cement part of the levy and sit there and watch the fish goodbye. During, during, during...
As long as you got, yeah, as long as you approve that as a temporary activation, yes.
Does the waterway included in that?
No, that's a, no, that's a...
But this is, this is really, it's really designed for that walkway that we're thinking, somebody's thinking about building in the future.
The rec trail extension. It could, yes. But again, it's blue, so you could activate that. Now, once you activate it, you may decide, you know, we want to activate that permanently. And the reason that the 160 acres was included is between when we passed the, when you passed the DORA the first time and now, there were significant changes to the state law. They added acreage, they added a number. You know, we were restricted to having one relatively small DORA for a city our size. Now, we could have three, is it three?
Yes.
Of 350 acres each. For the record, we're only asking for an expansion of one, that's it. So there's been, there's been a lot of, a lot of changes to this. One of them that really didn't change, so another thing that we highlighted that Salome mentioned earlier is, council would have the ability under this application and ordinance in the future to legislate changes to hours and days. If they want to adjust that permanently, without going through this entire formal process again. There's a carve-out, though, still in the new ORC legislation that still requires the full process if boundary changes are enacted. That's why in talking to the law director, the discussion was, and we kind of took this, plagiarized this from at least one other community that's doing something similar, was to make it as large as, you know, reasonable, put it in blue. That way, it's dormant unless there's a specific reason that council wants to activate that. That's why that was all in there. It wasn't specifically focused on the rec trail. But that's certainly one reason why we would want to include it in the blue at this point.
And your question, Jeff, is, why are we doing it if there's no development so far?
Exactly. So we can always come back and do it at another council.
I do have a question.
You could, but it's not just about the rec trail. It's, you know, there is some levy down there, as limited as it is, as limited as it is. And we don't know when and how quickly any of the low dam development projects is going to be, the southeast area, you know, how fast that might develop. And so again, you know, if we just include it in the blue, it may never get activated, but at least it's there, it's under this process. And in the future, if we do want to make some changes, they're much, much easier to make.
You could activate it, like, whether they go with ten or the Montberg. I mean, there's reasons for it.
Well, I have some... There's not a bench.
You can't walk the bench.
Okay, I do have, I have some questions.
It's a flat, it's a flat cement sloping into the river.
For the most problematic space.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, basically.
Yeah, and then you could also rail the drive.
On the activation zone, is it going to be treated as an all-or-nothing proposition project sponsor, or a project or an event sponsor?
No, no, it, no. The council does not have to activate all 160 acres at once.
Okay.
No.
And so would we treat the activation zones kind of in a similar process we do not with standing ordinances now?
It would be part of the notwithstanding ordinance.
If we have notwithstanding ordinances now that seem to work, why are we creating an activation zone which seems to create some degree of confusion?
Because what this would allow is people to, the notwithstanding requires the event sponsor or coordinator to basically create their own liquor establishment. That's how they do that. So it's much, much different, much more involved than if council were to activate a certain section on behalf of the strawberry festival. And then somebody is just going in to one of the restaurants and then walking out with their DORA drink.
So the project sponsor then wouldn't be responsible for getting the temporary liquor license nor the insurance that goes along with that?
Correct.
If the activation zone, if a project sponsor wanted to activate a certain part of the zone, does that certain part of the zone have to be continuous, contiguous with the existing zone as it exists now?
Yes.
So if somebody wanted to do a car show at the park, we would have to create the activation zone in such a way to ensure that it is currently abutting up against the orange and the yellow? And it would be the responsibility of the project sponsor to put out extra trash cans and signage for the duration of the event?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would monitor that, we, you know, and something like that, that's probably going to be a pretty big event that we're already, would be involved with. And so we'd be walking them through the process, we'd be coordinating, we'd be making sure that they have the right signage, helping them along the way.
Okay. Mrs. Sneak, did you have a question?
I believe my question was answered with that, thank you.
Do council members have any, Mr. Roseau?
Since we are, we are including certain park areas.
Have this been brought up to the park or commissioners, and what's their view?
We had talked to them previously. We also talked to the, yes, and we also talked to the Board of Recreation Board, yes. And that was positive, that was very, very positive.
Mr. Schilling?
When we talked about the Methodist Church, I think you stated that the application as it exists right now had excluded, or we'd forgotten to add some liquor establishments? I've got, you sent me an email or a text on it.
Well, that's, that was the first, the first item on that, on that feedback slide, where there are a couple of liquor establishments. Now, that's a purely administrative item that's not required as part of the application. So had that been the only change, you wouldn't have to amend or reject the application for those reasons. The two that left off were Donatos and Dunaways, maybe one other. But those two were not on that list. But that was just a list that we were going to supply to the, to liquor control, so that they knew who to notify. They do their own independent research, because they've got everybody in their database. So if we would have missed somebody, they would catch them anyway, and that would not make the application defective.
Okay, I thought our, on our discussions, that had made the application defective, and we had to start over again.
At the time you and I spoke, I believe that was my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
When we're done with land and everything, I just have a couple of questions for either Salome or Andrea on the...
When what?
Whenever you're, we're done, talk about the land issues.
Okay. What I do want to do now is open it up to public comments. I know I have a lot of folks here that want to speak on this. So if you wish to speak on this proposed amendments, you're welcome to do so. Please come to the podium, be a guest, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hello, my name's Andrea Keller, 405 Southwest Public Square. And I'm the executive director of Troy Main Street. Troy Main Street has worked with the city staff over the last year to collect surveys from our downtown businesses. Those have been sent out monthly, and that, all of that information has been compiled and provided at different city council meetings. So I just wanted to reiterate that that is how we came up with the recommendations when we, when we worked with the city. It was all based on feedback from businesses. And then we also, as Troy Main Street, met individually with all of the liquor license establishments. Because obviously, they see this more, more, more than our retailers do. And so they have, you know, more insight into what things could be... and so they have, you know, more insight into what things could be done better. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that we did meet with all of them one-on-one, and all of that information was taken into consideration in coming up with the recommendations as well. And then, I had three business owners reach out to me today that were not able to be here tonight, but wanting me to express that they're in support of the proposed changes, and those were Connor Heron from Heron's Market, which I think he ended up sending an email as well, Steve Smith from the Caroline, and Allison Follin Camp from Somers Reme. So, that's all I have, unless you have a question.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Andrea.
Do you have questions for us?
Yeah, well, I don't- who wants- needs to answer these. Under our DORA rules, reminders are written, reminders. My understanding is the DORA cup is purchased to go. I mean, you walk it, you're not sitting there drinking inside the establishment with the DORA cup.
I believe technically, you're legally allowed to drink it in the establishment, but we do have, I know of at least one establishment, that they have established that rule for their business, because they just feel for them to manage. But my understanding is that legally, you're allowed to have it in a DORA cup in the restaurant, you just can't bring it-
So that restaurant would be selling, once you consume that drink and you're still sitting there drinking it, they would sell you another DORA cup if you went on to drink? Because that's how it's supposed to function, correct?
Right, yeah.
Well, they're, I mean, if you go to a bar, they don't-
Well, stickers, well, stickers now.
They refill, well, they don't refill your drink, I think to help-
I understand that, but-
Who's monitoring that? The same way.
So who's monitoring that?
You mean, you mean if you have-
The bar's going to monitor it.
You mean it's like, you're- do that ordering or something?
I'm saying, I don't, you meant the establishment, I don't see a sense that you would use the DORA cups inside.
Right, it would be somebody that says, yeah, I'd like to buy a DORA drink.
And I can see when your date or whoever you're with finishes their meal, because you got done early.
Right.
But then you're out the door.
Out the door.
Yeah.
You're not saying, hey, I want my drink, oh, by the way, put it in the DORA cup, because I might be leaving in an hour.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, you could, I mean, I don't know that legally we can tell the businesses that they have to make people leave with the DORA drink, because I don't think that's how the-
It would have to be policed by the establishment.
But to your point-
Which is it going now?
Yeah. The other thing they can do is if somebody wants to drink, they can have it in the DORA cup when they leave.
That's not technically-
I won't say either, is it?
I thought that was the point of it.
I don't care, they're in the bar, so if they're leaving, the only thing we care about is if they leave, and then they have to try to come back.
That's right.
Once they leave, they're in the public right away, and they're out the door.
Across the threshold.
All right. Any other questions for Andrea?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, thank you, Andrea.
Hey, you missed kickoff anyway, relax.
Anyone else?
Kelly Snyder, 935 Atlantic Street. I just have a question about the temporary line over towards Treasure Island. On the map that I saw, and it didn't look like it was as clear on that map that I could see, it looks like people can walk up Elm Street, is that correct?
Just on the east side, so that there's a connection, so that there's a connection between Treasure Island, so it remains contiguous, yes.
Couldn't they just walk-
We don't want them on both sides of Elm Street.
Couldn't they just walk on the bike path?
They could.
They probably could. But that might not always happen, because they might be coming from Dunaway's or Donato's, and they're down West Main Street.
Are the Eagles included?
Yeah, I don't think the Eagles is included in this.
The Eagles, yeah, well, I mean, they're surrounded.
They are by the map.
I mean, they're within the area, they're just a private club, so, you know, they can regulate themselves. But if you look up Elm Street, you see that thin blue line-
Well, that's what I'm saying, that would take care of Elm Street for them, because they're in front of them.
Correct.
But only if it's activated.
Sure.
Only if it's activated.
Right, only if it's activated, yeah, I understand that.
But I don't mean that they have to activate that part of it, they could activate, we'll have to look into the rec trail a little more. We have to update our rec trail rules based on the new ORC.
It does lead to a different question. If, I mean, I'm going to assume the Eagles have some type of liquor permit, for an activated event, would they also be a DORA vendor?
They could.
Okay.
They could do that. And actually, Troy Main Street was a DORA vendor during the tour to Elm.
Because they're not like, they don't have the hash marks at the Eagles. But I was just concerned that that's a long residential space there.
On the west side.
On the west side.
Well, on the west side, but I mean, it's still, you know.
And that's why that thin blue line is there, it's only on the east side.
Yeah.
Similar to, you know, to make the change for the first mess this.
Okay. Okay.
And again, that blue, so that's part of the discussion with any notwithstanding and any requests that we've made.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Dean, 4 West Main Street. This doesn't really affect my business pop up at 4 West Main one way or the other. We have a lot of people in and out doing different things, but the DORA doesn't affect the majority of them. I'm just curious, the decision to go seven days, what do other cities in Ohio that have the DORA, what are their hours? Like, why do we go to the seven days versus just the weekend? I'm just out of curiosity, and do we know what other cities do?
Sure. Sure. So, there is no uniform formula? But there are plenty of cities, and plenty is a relative term, that do seven days. There are some that do expanded hours beyond what we're proposing as well. When we discussed with Troy Main Street and with Chamber and with other feedback that we all got from businesses, one of the most frequent concerns or that they were hearing, questions that they were asked from customers, was, you know, what are the rules, when can I do it, when can I do it? If we had to educate people, it was those that might be out walking around on a Monday night or a Tuesday night, and it's like, no, you're not on Thursday.
Nobody reads the signs.
So, this made it just more uniform, and since we had so few issues this first year, we were not concerned. And I will also say, since you brought this question up, that the police chief could not be here, but I did have a conversation, we did have a conversation with the police chief. He did not have any concerns at all about going seven days. He felt like the lessening the confusion was important to do.
I appreciate you sharing that, because based on the results from the survey that were in the packet, you wouldn't see that, like it says only two people voted for seven days a week, X amount of people. So I just appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you. Jeff, did you have a question real quick?
Just to follow up on that Sunday deal, very quick. How many businesses are open on Sunday? We've got a couple of restaurants that have had, and everybody else is locked down like a-
We have a few restaurants that are open, we're concerned about it.
Some of them are open until noon.
We've got several retail establishments that are now opening, that are now open on Sunday, and it's trending more that way. It's not a lot, it's only a handful, but more now, and Andrea's still here, but more now than we did a year ago, or a year and a half, whenever we first looked at this issue.
I didn't think there was anybody, I mean, others, Subhouse, maybe Mojo's, I'm not sure. And Caroline's open for brunch.
McGave and Ryan's.
McGave and Ryan's, yeah.
All right.
I'm Steve Henderson at 975 Dickerson. I'm going to throw a wet blanket on this, I'm going to give you another view of what I think of this. Looks to me like the objective is figure out a way to lengthen the amount of miles people can walk with a drink in their hand. Now, I understand if I were a business person some downtown, I would want more people walking around, maybe with a buzz on, so they'd buy something from me. So I understand that completely. One of the, there's a couple of other things. If I was a resident downtown, and I had a six-pack of beer in the refrigerator, I couldn't walk around with that can of beer downtown, because I don't have a DORA thing. So I have to go to a bar, even though I live right next to it, I've got to get a DORA thing, so I can drink somebody's more expensive beer, and I'll leave my inexpensive six-pack in the refrigerator. Doesn't make any sense to me. Some of the survey results that we saw in the addendum aren't really, really don't provide compelling arguments for this. Twelve, let's see, I'm going to- On the DORA days, only six of 22 respondents wanted seven by seven. The other 22 were all over the place in terms of how many days they wanted it. So if you're looking for a compelling reason for this, the survey doesn't support it, okay? The DORA hours that are in the survey, they're not overwhelming either, in terms of, oh, let's go 11 to 11. I hope all the signs we have on our trash cans glow in the dark, because at 11 o'clock, you're not going to read any of them, no matter what color they are. Well, let's be serious, how many people are going to be out there in the night versus noontime? So if you're trying to do something, let's try to do it right, and have a little common sense. Twelve of the 17 businesses that were surveyed saw no reason to expand the area. So, I got to ask the question, what's, are you going to follow the survey? Looks like we're trying to figure out, oh, who's got the biggest DORA in Miami County? I mean, it seems like that's the objective. I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but I don't see any reason for it, other than we'll have more people walking around with a drink in their hand. Quite frankly, I don't care. And I don't think you should either. And the more people walking around with a drink in their hand, only makes me, as a driver downtown, it's like, oh, are they going to look both ways at every intersection? I think the answer is when you've got a buzz on, hell no. We can't let, what we're proposing is, anybody that's got a DORA cup can't drive. So if he can't drive, why do we expect him to be responsible for walking? Okay? So I'm nervous about this, I'm nervous about the precedent it stands. The blue part, I understand, I wish the yellow would turn blue, so that there's some adult, adults looking at this, and I've got my fingers crossed, that you would take a look at, when do we activate it, can we do a little bit at a time? Having it a permanent, really, really makes me really nervous. Also, the idea of every, if you already got a DORA cup, you're out walking around with a drink, you can't go into a bar to get another one. So hopefully, the bars will have a trash can outside, so they can throw away the DORA cup, go in and get another drink. I don't know, you know, I've been to New Orleans, you probably all have too, and there is a problem with people not being respectful. Now, I understand we're looking mostly at residents of Troy, so we can all be, all be looking for responsible citizens doing the right thing. But when there's big events, strawberry festival, they're not all going to be from Troy, and they're going to have a little less concern about the mess they leave. Okay, so, that's kind of my comments. I think the number of different colored signs, the blue, black, yellow, at 11 o'clock at night, they're all going to look the same to me. And the idea that you can have a DORA cup and go into a dress store, because they got a green DORA thing, just blows my mind. So I understand it's the store's option to do that, but to be able to go into a dress store with a drink, and not be able to go into a bar with a drink, seems to be a disconnect to me. So, anyway, that's my two cents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Henderson? Mr. Chair, thank you, Steve, thank you, Steve. Just to clarify, I mean, we couldn't get too detailed in the explanation on the survey, but the feedback that we got was that, and the way that the answers to the survey questions were reflected, that's what their different priorities were. Let me see if I can explain it. So, it wasn't that they were opposed to 11 to 11, or seven days a week.
Well, but they weren't favored over either.
Well, I'd like to see it go Wednesdays, or I'd like to see it go on Sunday. They were not opposed to going seven days a week, that just wasn't part of their response. So it was really, this is the minimum that I'd like to see, more than, no, I don't want to see seven days a week, and only six or whatever number you threw out, said that. Same thing with the hours as well. As far as the users, or the participants in DORA, yes, we have a lot of local participation, but in the bigger events that we've had, we've had quite a few out-of-towners. And I, it's all anecdotal, but, you know, I would not say it was weighed heavily residents only. There were plenty of outsiders that have engaged in our DORA, and have provided just feedback to us, saying that, you know, this is wonderful, it's great that we can do this. There's not been any kind of, you know-
One of the problems we have with surveys is it depends on who you ask. If you go up and ask somebody with a DORA cup, what do you think of DORA? I'm going to guess they're going to be pretty positive with that.
Well, it's not that we were asking, it's not that we went out around with a clipboard asking the question. These were just random comments, and they were few and far between, but they were there.
Right.
With the survey, the survey was just pushed out to everybody who was on Troy Main Street's emailing list of businesses downtown, and then they chose whether or not to respond. That's why we didn't have 100% participation, much like every survey. So just to clarify that, that we took everything and wanted to make it as least confusing as we could, standardized around a set of hours, with the knowledge that if, you know, at some point, something needs to be tweaked, the council can do that easier than in the past, because the whole application process and procedure drawn out would not have to be followed. So, it would allow, you know, activation, but also deactivation.
What I'm concerned about is, once into 11, and seven days a week, they're going to be hard pressed to say, oh, never mind, we're only going to do it on the weekend. Because they're always going to find somebody somewhere, probably a business, that says, no, I want these people wandering around every day. So I'm concerned about, once you do it, yeah, I understand you can undo it, but that doesn't happen overnight. It's usually after something bad happens. So I don't, what I'm saying is, I'd like to see, to be preventative, rather than say, oh, we can react to any emergency, I don't know kidding. And who's going to enforce this, by the way? If I walk past a trash can with a DORA bottle, who's going to stop me, the police?
Police, that's who does the old thing.
I would hope that the police would have a lot more important things to do than do that.
I'd remind the council that we've been doing this now for years, so we've been monitoring it pretty closely.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I'll take my wet blanket a little while, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for your patience. Anyone else wish to address council?
Hi, Jules Harris, 170 Riverside Drive. I also own Trojan Forest Downtown. And so as a person who did answer the survey questions, I would agree with what Patrick said. In my answers to those surveys, when they asked about extended hours, I don't know that my understanding of that was- I don't know that my understanding of that was, you know, that this was all availability. So, I probably said some extended hours, but not like a Sunday to Saturday. Same with the map, now that we've got scratch pizza being in some different places, that type of thing, I totally see a reason why we would extend that to some of those other businesses. I'm also on the Strawberry Festival board, and we were very successful with the DORA in place and didn't have instances. I think Sunday, I agree, like Sunday, why would somebody want to necessarily be, there wouldn't be so many people out or businesses open, but so I don't see that that would be such a risk, but it would be an opportunity that when we do have a festival or we have something else going on, that it makes it an easier proposal to have that in place to benefit those things at that time. I think that the Strawberry Festival showed that we could be really successful with a lot of people who are not from town. So, that's just my, I just wanted to say that I agree with Patrick that in those surveys, while I was very positive in all those surveys, I probably was not one that said, hey, do it all the time. But I would not be opposed to that, that would also be something that I would support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brad, I've got a 105 plus with drive, just a couple of questions I have regarding this. We have gone from 20 ounces non-glass containers which are supplied by the city of Troy Main Street. Now, we are expecting the liquor establishments to supply their own. Was that a cost-driven issue, or what was the driven issue behind that?
That was a simplicity.
Issue behind that?
That was a simplicity also, that was very much supported by the businesses.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, they preferred the stickers, and it makes it a lot easier for two reasons. Number one, they don't have to maintain a separate inventory of specifically sanctioned...
Door cups.
Of one specific size, one specific type. Several of our, at least a couple of our downtown liquor establishments have unique containers that they use, and this would allow them to use those containers, non-glass, 20 ounces or less, and they have total flexibility, and they are more than willing to work with whoever their print or vendor is. You would have seen, there's a space for business logo at the bottom of the sticker in case they want to personalize it, which helps us and our police department because if we see somebody wandering and not following the rules, we can also see which business they were at so that we can maybe track back a little further to that business.
Okay. And I just have a comment about the Sunday hours in particular. Most of your businesses downtown on Sundays usually do not open until about noon, if not later, only because you got church. Unless you're a Catholic that wants to take your communion wine out to the street with you, I guess you, we wouldn't have too many businesses open at 11 o'clock on a Sunday morning.
It's a DORA chalice.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Rizell. You got my, you got my point. So, could we theoretically reduce the hours just on Sunday to say maybe 12 or 1 to 11?
Most businesses do open at 11. Most businesses do open at 11 o'clock, and the businesses, there were a couple of restaurants that did specifically ask about Sunday hours. Whether they're 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock, the idea was trying to be consistent over all seven days. And I don't, we did not chart what hours, I will say mass because I'm Catholic, but worship is. So, you know, whether it's 7:30, 9:30, and 11:30, or 11 to 12, I, you know...
Bill, you want to answer that one?
Standard and simple.
Bill, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, based on the current configuration of freeze we have, we're done way before 12.
Well, you have that one a month now? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. A second thing I have, second question.
Boundaries.
Are the DORA signs still going to say, no alcohol past this point? Because that's very confusing to me. You know, I guess my question is, are we going to see a lot of big activations on some of these areas? Some of these temporary areas? Like from, like from, I'm assuming that's Elm Street, right?
Yeah, it's the one on the left.
The one on the left, up to where?
To Treasure Island, to the northwest. It would cross...
Is that at Ridge Avenue there?
No, not on Elm Street. It's not Ridge.
The bottom line going west is West Main Street.
No, I'm talking about the one on the left, going up to the northwest.
Elm Street.
That's Elm Street, okay. But what is the heavy one right at the end of the Donoys extension? That...
West Main Street.
It's West Main Street.
No, 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 I'm talking about the one going north.
Adams Street.
That's Adams Street, okay. That's confusing, sorry. Okay, so you're running up north Elm Street, okay. All right. Well, I'm just concerned that there's going to be some confusion in the boundaries. And you said that it's dormant, right?
Yes.
So...
The permanent, the permanent DORA will be 31.8 acres or...
31.8, I think is what this is.
And that, those will have the cast iron or whatever decorative...
Trash cans.
Trash cans, as well as the permanent DORA signs on them. If there's an activation as part of the notwithstanding ordinance, we would require that the same signage be provided on a temporary basis by the property or the coordinator of the event, as well as sufficient trash receptacles. They can be the box, you know, the kind of box things that you see.
Who's making the signs on that? Who's making the signs on that?
Who's making them?
Who's what?
Who's making the signs on that? If you're expecting...
We would work with them on that, and we would make sure that they, they put the signs out.
Well, why not just provide the signs to them? Why not, instead of making them responsible for the signs, why not just provide the signs to them?
Brad, we might end up doing that.
That would be an easy way to make...
It's just copier paper.
Right, right. I mean, that's just, it's just...
Some might do it their own way and want to use their own sign shop if it's a more sophisticated event.
Yeah, well, I just think if we're going to expand it, we should make it easier for the event organizer, and not put so much on them, that if we're already helping them with the signs, we might as well just provide it to them.
Well, would we require the event organizers to bag existing signs in the case where the zone is increased? Like, I could see like over the North Market Street Bridge, where there's a sign says, no alcohol. No alcohol past this point, would they bag those signs for activated events?
Yeah, bag it, and put a magnet on it or, you know, something to block it.
Okay.
I mean, we're kind of entering uncharted waters, don't get it twisted, I'm for it. I'm for it, we're kind of entering some uncharted waters. We, I guess we just, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Bariner. Any other residents, wish to address counsel?
Best of life.
That's okay.
We were debating.
That's okay.
Kathy Roder, 1164 West Main Street. As you know, I'm the executive director for the Chamber, and I'm also managing the Troy Strawberry Festival. I just want to address that, the Strawberry Festival welcomes the opportunity for this dormant area that could be activated during the Strawberry Festival. So, we do understand how that would work and that we would provide the signage and trash cans. We've always worked well with the city and don't anticipate any problems with that, just to address those issues that just came up. And I also want to say that from a business side of things, I think the consistency with hours and days makes it easier not only for the businesses, it makes it easier for our residents and then also the visitors who are coming to our communities, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Tammy Walkup, I'm at 456 Robin Hood Lane. And I just wanted to say that I am full supporting the DORA, and I work with a lot of different municipalities all over Ohio in booking entertainment for their areas and in their DORA area. And when this whole thing was going to be voted on, I spoke with so many of my clients just to get a feel for where they had been as far as issues. And I explained to them, you know, we're getting ready to vote on our DORA. Have you had any negativity about yours, you know? And most of them, almost without fail, were actually extending their footprint because they had had no, like, really glaring issues with their DORA. And, you know, we're grownups. And let's face it, people who are going to get plastered aren't going to spend eight, nine dollars on a beer downtown to get plastered. And they're going to, you know, people that are drinking to get drunk are going to stay home and drink the cheap stuff. I'm just saying. So, that's all I have. And I'm also on the Strawberry Festival board. I'm the general chair for 2023, and I think it's an amazing thing, and people love it in the other areas that I've talked with, so, that is all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other final comments, questions, or concerns from council members? Seeing that, what is, what should the committee?
I would move that as a committee that we disapprove the current application, that the modifications requested be resubmitted, and that we go forward with the modifications that probably need to be specified, correct? So, that would be the county parking lot, not the parking lots, the county area on the complex and that the area where the Methodist Church, I guess that would be outside of the first place, be excluded from the current boundaries, and that everything else go forward as surveying.
Sir, I would second that motion, I think that's a good idea.
Is there any further discussion?
Can I just clarify what you said about the request from the county? As I'm reading it, was the North Cherry Street parking lot?
Yeah, it's just east, it's the parking area east of the safety building.
Okay. So, that's what that motion was indicating.
Excuse me, the yellow area.
It's the county complex, I'm making sure it's the Cherry Street parking lot.
Cherry Street's behind.
No, the Cherry Street is to the east of the safety building, behind the sign.
There, I could clarify the motion, Mr. Chair. The, I would clarify that the existing parking lots continue to remain, that the area for the county that's being included under the new map that they've requested be excluded, be excluded from the new map.
Be changed to blue.
Be changed to blue, I'm sorry, be changed to blue.
I would second that.
Please, can we move on?
Is there any further discussion? Is this a subject that I can address?
The beekeepers are more in...
There is, okay.
There's no further discussion, I mean, we don't really take roll call votes into council committees as a whole, but it seems like everybody's kind of nodding their head yes, so, the recommendation will be to... To indefinitely postpone, just, I guess it's an ordinance, and then in the report, we will report these two substantive changes for amendment. All right. Anything else for the committee?